Good evening, I'm Andrew Elmer. May 29th, 18, we're at Central Hall, 721 San Monica Boulevard. I'll ask the of the Treasury Mobile.
Trusty Fonstad?
Here.
Trusty Simchich? Trusty Sumner?
Here.
Trusty Torado?
Here.
Trusty Krabba?
Yes.
Trusty Oma?
Here.
President Fraser?
Here. Persons desiring to be heard, everybody gets three minutes to divide your time between now or when an agenda item is called, or throw your time completely to when the agenda item is called. We ask everybody to fill out a speaker card. It's not too late. Uh, Susan Drager Anderson.
Hello, Susan Drager Anderson, library director, North Shore Library. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the renovation project. Auntie Peterson, city manager of Bayside, continues to work to rewrite the joint library agreement that will include a lease with new terms. The city managers and I will meet again on June 11th. I know it's changed a lot, on June 11th, and we'll be reviewing that as well as some other issues. The North Shore Library Foundation met on April 25th, and they are very anxious to start fundraising, but first we'll need a memorandum of commitment from each of our communities that includes a start date. I think I shared with you last month that Mayor Kennedy was planning to reach out to each of the village presidents. I don't think that's happened. He's been on the busy schedule. So, Stevie Anderson, president of River Hills, intends to follow up with Mayor Kennedy, and he wants to leave on this issue. So, we'll be hearing more about that. But the foundation is really excited to start fundraising. Some very good news, I was really excited today to find out that the Fox Point Foundation has generously approved a request for funding for the library for an AED for a total of $1,413. This, the staff is really excited to hear about this. We all had training by the North Shore Fire Department at our staff development day, and, but just couldn't afford that AED. So now we're really happy to have that and hopefully never have to use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Elmer, Mr. Elmer?
Hi, could I defer the time to the topic of the report?
Certainly you can. Would anyone else like to be heard on a matter on or off the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move to agenda item three, which is the consent agenda. We have a lot of the libraries on the consent agenda. If any member would like to be heard, I approve the consent agenda. Seeing none, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Fonstad, discussion always in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda is approved. Agenda item four, unfinished business. We'll start with a property located at 411 East Bradley Road. Mr. Manager?
Is anyone here for 411 East Bradley? They said they would be here, but they might be late. I will get the report that I have, and that is that as of this afternoon, we're receiving a fax from the Diggers Hotline. You know, when you dig, you're supposed to be notified by Diggers Hotline, that we're supposed to locate because they're going to do the gas disconnect on that property imminently, and so that's good news. We'll be waiting for the energy to do the gas disconnect on that property. So, that property continues to move ahead, but we were delayed, as I said last month, by the energy. So, that's good news.
Any questions for the manager? The property located at 139 East Good Hope Road.
And I also heard that the Villletree went down, eh?
Yep.
Okay. The Villletree, you remember the Villletree issued that 411? The Villletree was taken down today. It's not yet been totally removed, but it's been taken down, so.
Hold on, are we on 411?
That was on 411.
139.
That was on 411. I have a little side record.
All right.
Back to 139. Is there someone here from 139? As you know, on 139 East Good Hope Road, the village authorized staff to move ahead with preparation of a raise order. In the end room, I had a conversation with Mr. Nagel, and I think there was a misunderstanding on whether or not they needed to appear. He'll give an update on what's going on with his property. I did have a conversation with the building inspector today, but I'll let you go ahead and fill in what I need to fill in after.
Sure. Thank you. I'm Andrew Nagel, owner of that property under LLC.
Could you give your address, just to go ahead and differ?
Sure. 121 Michelle Drive in Johnson Creek, Wisconsin. It's 5303. So, yeah, so progress report, a misunderstanding on my part for not attending the last meeting. I don't want to say misunderstood kind of what was needed there. No updates to report, but I was also a lot of obviously on work. But in either case, I think after speaking with Scott, I kind of understand the direction that we need to be present for every meeting going forward, and where we haven't really had any progress to report, so we didn't. At this point now, demo's been completed, the demo permit was issued, and the place has basically been done. We have a lot of good progress there. We have plans drawn up, and we're ready, I think, to proceed. I don't know how the, actually, I've heard about that conversation with the building inspector yet, but I think he feels good about where we're at.
Yeah, I'll fill in. I talked to Mike, the inspector, this afternoon. Excuse me. He indicates that he expects plans to be submitted next week.
Correct.
And then he will appear on the subsequent building board agenda for their approval.
I have.
To your credit, you guys made some, made some good progress.
I didn't, I just got these guys yesterday, so they weren't available in time for the agenda. Would you like a copy of that?
No, I don't really think the board is, I mean, this is kind of not prevailing. We just, what you build is probably less important to this body, it's more important to the building board. We just all kind of want to make sure that you get the issue addressed.
Yep. So, at this point, I would guess I would ask if we can kind of mark that raise order and get back to the regular monthly meeting of us seeing progress, as long as there's no concerns by the village. Is there anything, I guess, that you need from me at this point?
My recommendation, and Mr. Larson, you can jump in, is that we just kind of let it sit in abeyance and monitor the progress.
The raise order says they have 30 days from when they get the notice to raise the property. That was per your direction. So, it's up to the board. We are agenda to talk about this in closed session. If there is any substantive conversation, I'd suggest we hold it up with closed session. But if the board have a mind that they don't need to close session, I'd just like to just let us sit until next month, we can do that in open sessions, get the closed session.
Mr. Fonstad?
Yeah, I was going to point out that we are, it's an agenda for a closed session on this item, and I suggest we proceed with the closed session and see if we want to get the action after that.
Mr. Fonstad?
I would recommend that we would just go to the stand and not cop out in closed session. I don't think I know, I can wait here all the evening for something else. If it's going to come to the next board meetings, there's action going on, that's sort of ultimately what we want.
Mr. Oma?
I have a couple of concerns about the problem. You get a pool of that, right? Okay, you get some type of covering over the pool, but the yard is not completely fenced in. I believe by ordinance, you have to have it completely fenced in for a pool. The pool is full, and you, and the place, you might have cleaned up the inside, but you haven't cleaned up the outside yet.
And at least, is the, we decided to say I'm filling, filling in the pool first?
I'm sorry, what's going on?
To fill in the pool, actually.
You get to fill the pool?
Mm-hmm. And why do you think that has to take place? I can have it in the next couple of weeks before next month's meeting, I direct.
Still, still a safety hazard, even with the cover on, filled with water, and, you know, kids can get in there, and when it's getting good, they're going to be jumping out, so.
Can you drain it? Yeah, absolutely. Whatever we need to do, make that record.
What are you going to drain it to?
Mr. Fonstad?
Katie Ryan. I understand your specific question. You say fill in the pool, like you're just going to fill it with soil, as it is?
And then, yeah, so there'll be, there'll be sand over and everything.
So, does that need a, some kind of a permitting process to do that? Kind of interesting to get, I've heard something about a colleague that realized they did that, and what happens? There's no drainage. You get heavy rains, and the water doesn't know where to drain, it's pooling. This is more a technical question, I think, I'm thinking, what happens next? But I just want to make it a point that I actually don't think filling a pool, I mean, really, the pool's getting dug out, all the concrete portions of it, which is going to have a huge cost, it's quite a cost, which is what it is, but.
I'll just make, just make something else, but.
The other part, just real quickly, is I think maybe more like the kind of order of meeting or agenda for something with private session, closed session, I think we have to honor that agenda.
No, I, well, I don't, we can ask the village attorney for his views, but I think that the proceedings will get to that agenda, and the board can then decide whether it wants to go into closed session or not on that item.
I agree.
Okay.
Good.
Mr. Fonstad?
I apologize, I didn't know there was a pool in that. I was not trying to stem. I think that's critical, that has to be addressed.
Mr. Fonstad? I would just be interested in having the benefit of Collins' advice of procedurally the impact of, you know, doing something and what would be the proper thing to do at the beginning, do that open session or closed session, but I'm just not sure what would be, you know, what kind of a, I, action we would take.
Well, we have all sorts of legal tools available, but I think any legal discussion is probably best to occur in closed session.
Yeah, and I would say that this agenda item, if there's no action, then that's a this agenda, it's only action.
That's right. All right, any other questions for the property owner? Mr. Nagel, thank you. Thank you for your time. Item four, a four-way stop sign at Bradley and Regent Road, as you recall, one year ago, has a test. We directed the police department, our suggestions to the police department, that it might be a four-way stop sign on the Bradley Regent's road, and I believe the chief is going to report that as funding. Chief Green.
Chief, you're correct. February 13th of 2018, the village passed consideration or took action to place a stop sign at the intersection, and we revisit it in one year. And this, actually, I'll just frame it, it wasn't here previously, I'll kind of just refresh them a little bit, I'll just skim them out. We began collecting data in 2017 at a citizen's request, who were given concerns of speeding vehicles on Bradley Road. We used that data to do directed and random enforcement actions. That was somewhat successful, but the problem continued to the point that the residents in the area came to the board looking for additional solutions. Through that time, we continued to collect data, and I guess I'm just here to report back as was, as was considered on that date, that we should evaluate pre- and post. Members of the board were all given copies of the data. I don't know if the members of the audience that did not, if they want a copy, I have initial copies of the data. I'll put on the side table. In general, the, I'm not going to take a lot of your time, you all have had the chance to read it, but overall, the, the data maintained some, what is that? Some consistency in the average speed, the 50th percentile and the 85th percentile, pre and post stop sign placement. Based on that information, at the end of the report, I've met the village manager, and the recommendation that we've now come up with in addition to our continued enforcement activities, would be to place some monies in the capital budget to put, to install radar feedback signs, the signs that read your speed and flash the speed you're going on a semi-permanent basis there. We use the speed trailer as a mobile device, and this is, I guess, the next traffic calming measure that we can come up with when we are set up.
Would this be in lieu of the four-way stop or in addition to?
Well, we are making a rec, we did not recommend to put the stop sign in, so we are not making any recommendations to take the stop sign out or retain it. The, the recommendation has came through the Department of Health and Sports and through the manager.
Okay, let's hear from the manager. I know Mr. Nagel wants to speak on this too.
I'm going to.
Excuse me, Mr. Mr. Elmer, sorry.
Yeah, our recommendation is, I mean, if you remember last year, we had some concerns, I think Chief Green expressed it well, is that the speeds that were reflected on the street were at the 85th percentile. So, you know, I've done this long enough that I think sometimes there's a perception that people are speeding on the street, when in fact they're driving to the 85th percentile, which is where a lot of people settle out on almost all streets when you measure them. So, we put the stop sign in. I have some concerns about the precedent of just dropping stop signs in as a speed control measure, because to be honest, they're not a speed control measure. The data has shown that again. But I do think that there's some benefit in, you know, having the, like, it's on page 94 of the packet, these solar-powered digital signs that flash what your speed is, they have been found to be more effective than a stop sign in many cases, because you see it, you don't walk out, it's around, because it really communicates what your speed really is. A stop sign doesn't do that. The other thing that I actually had in my office, and I'm not going to tell you so much, I probably had two calls, but two calls from people in the area saying, geez, I hear cars peeling out now. Well, of course you do, because you've got a stop sign there. If you didn't have a stop sign, they would continue on their path at 30 miles an hour, 34 miles an hour, and you wouldn't hear the stop-start of vehicles. So, that's something that comes with stop signs. I'm not saying that, that driving through Fox Point is NASCAR, but it's not. But it is just another complexity as it has to do with stop signs. So, one of the things that Chris and I talked about is that we do something like the sign on page 94 in the packet, that we make them, he said semi-permanent, but the idea was that maybe we have a pipe in the ground, so we can actually move these to a couple of key spots in the village. We don't necessarily want to, I mean, they're kind of, you know, $3,500, give or take.
There are, that's why we put in the cap, I'm sorry, I was moving so that you, must be able to see you, but we did, we put in the capital budget because they are running between $3,500 and $4,000. And the idea of permanent placement, then just people become complacent and ignore it because it's always there. It sort of takes the place of the speed trailer, but it does allow us to have some, like, replacement.
So, if we would identify the areas in the community who think we have a propensity of people who may speed, that we could have these and say it sits on Bradley for two months, and we pick it up, and we may move it to Santa Monica and go to Hot, we could go wherever we identify these places. But that may be a better use of our efforts in terms of traffic calming than stop signs.
Is it your recommendation that we go back to a, two stop sign corner with these calming devices in place?
I would, but I'm also, if it's the board's wish, I'm not going to go to war over it. I mean, that is not, it's, I would hope that we not have a community that has stop signs at every intersection, because what's going to happen is that you're going to continue to get ever increasing requests for these things. And, you know, you drive through certain communities in Milwaukee, you go blocking, stop, you go blocking, stop, you go blocking, stop. And that's an expense to the community, and I don't think the track, it pulls traffic very well.
Mr. Elmer?
Again, Andrew Elmer, 101 East Bradley. I, like I said, I looked through the information, which, to look back to the same date was kind of the same thing that I said, whereas I didn't think it was going to be effective. I will say that living in the area, the people that, I think, that traveling in and out of that area, I think, appreciate the intersection. Like, it's a much easier intersection to navigate, primarily because of the property on the southeast corner. The bushes tend to become problematic for seeing when you're looking eastbound, if you're driving north. So, I've appreciated it from that standpoint. I don't think that, overall, obviously, the data doesn't show that it's really slowed anybody down, which I don't think any of us really thought that it would. We were also hoping that it would. I appreciate the recommendation for the signs, which is, I don't know, not very funny, I guess, but it was kind of what I came here a year and a half ago to ask for in the first place, but that wasn't as popular at the time, so if it is now, then wonderful. And I appreciate everyone's efforts, because it is a problem. I have three little kids. I just now, like, half trust them enough to ride the bikes to school, because they have to spend five minutes on Bradley Road. So, outside of that, I think, you know, people tend to behave themselves relatively well. Probably not everywhere, probably, as you would disagree, but from what I see, you know, it's mostly that. Once I get off of Bradley, things are, you know, seem nice, kind of better for, for the kids getting around. It's really my primary concern. I'm not overly concerned about my safety, it's more my kids, and obviously widening up the road and those kinds of things, if those are in the, in the future, I think will also be helpful. So, I appreciate your guys' time, even considering it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this item? Mr. Krabba?
Well, I guess I was thinking that, I was reading this wrong, but it really does show that it's not, the stop sign isn't that work, and people are, the, the speed's the same, and then you have the peeling on that, that, you know. So, I'm thinking, this, this portable sign is good, powered by solar, but what, can we explore taking it the next step, and if the speed exceeds the 70th or 80th percentile that the box takes a picture of the license plate, and we can send it, they want to be paraled.
Not a big one in Wisconsin, at the current time of the town.
Correct. Wisconsin doesn't, Wisconsin does not permit photo enforcement at this time, if they're following up with the due process, you have a right to face your accuser. The box is not.
But we're not giving them a ticket, we're just telling them, hey, we saw you speeding down this road. There are states, there are states that.
A safe photo.
No, there are states that, and that, but Wisconsin is not.
My allowance is not allowed in Wisconsin.
I have to, oh, yeah, as far as the citation goes, it's not allowed. The chain photo I have to refer to.
Mr. Elmer?
I'm just curious, has there been any accidents at the intersections since the stop sign?
I don't believe there have been any accidents related to the stop sign. If I'm trying to think back, we've had one property damage accident, but I believe it was north of the intersection, kind of unrelated to the intersection. And prior to that, I'm not aware of any accidents at the intersection. You know?
Yeah.
Recently or before that?
Before the sign.
Officer, could you, could you come up to the microphone, please, so we can reach you on the.
First of all, we have to say, I'm.
You're a member of the police, officer, wrong.
I know. Sergeant Brower, Fox Point Police, thank you. I know one, at least one accident of a West, West Palm vehicle on Bradley, and a North Palm vehicle on Regent. Car pulled out from the stop sign, didn't see the car coming west, I'm sorry, and they collided. West Palm vehicle veered off into a property. That was probably three years ago. But I'm not aware of any four-way stop accidents.
Thank you. Mr. Fonstad?
Yeah, I guess completely unscientific, but I would say that the, you know, the speed monitoring sign on Hill and Wicker Bay on Lake Drive, that's been there for years, still hits my attention, it's still coming out. So, that's just anecdotal. I'd also say that pre and post speeds are almost the same, but they're marginally lower at the average speed, and the max speed is, you know, 12 miles an hour slower. So, you know, that's, that's, there is a very, very slight difference. As far as sort of stop signs popping up in the village, I think you can draw a distinction between the major cross streets, Great Creek, Calumet, Bradley, Dean. In my mind, the more people have to stop along there, the less likely the area to cut through and, and, and rather than staying on the major arterials of Lake Drive and Fort Washington Road. So, I think, you know, that's, we're going to be dealing with a newly paved and widened Calumet and, we're going to have to see what we can do to avoid having that become kind of the quickest way across the village and, and, I don't know, so I don't know, I'm, I'm not concerned, I think, I think as concerned as the village manager is any case, about setting a bad precedent, people coming and, you know, not wanting stop signs on their intersection. Because I think we can say this is, you know, those four streets at least are, are special cases.
Anyone else?
Mr. Krabba? Just to clarify, the highest occurred speed was 12 miles an hour slower.
Correct.
From here.
Yeah.
Spring was 16, fall between 16 and 17.
Right, afterwards it was slower.
Slower.
Right, yeah.
165 higher, it's not going to be. No, we have made it from action taken, or, now, when we first did this, it was kind of like we gave, we empowered the staff to correct, to kind of make a.
Yes, we, we made a suggestion to the staff, I believe, and let the staff then decide on what was next.
Well, but when you make the suggestion, you try to listen.
But we can, if, if the board has a sense of what suggestion at this point we might want with the staff, I think we can, and let the staff decide. I think we really kind of have, we can do this by straw poll, just to see where everybody's at. I think the question is, do we, do we leave the stop, before we stop them, with these common signs, with these, what would you call them? They're called, uh, digital.
Radar feedback signs.
Radar feedback signs, I think, yes, Mr. Oma?
Yeah, I've already had a couple, these four phone calls from people about Calumet Road, and they're looking for a stop sign at Calumet, Calumet Road. They, they came up with the idea of Santa Claus, and I know people live right around Santa Claus, and they don't want it there because they don't want to hear the tires.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, you don't? I think, Mr. Fonstad, the point is probably a really good one that I hadn't thought about. You know, when you, when you have arterials or boulevards in your community that are meant to carry more traffic, and, you know, we know what they are going out to for, you know, you want that traffic to float, you want that, you want it to circle out so people don't cut through. And that's, that's, that's a very good point I hadn't mentioned, because, you know, if you start putting these stop signs on these arterial roads, people are going to, you know, snake their way through the village. That's a very, that's a very strong possibility, unless they're totally off-base, but that's been my experience.
So, my only thought on the stop sign is that, you know, I have driven north and south on Regent Road there, and I do think because of the bushes at the house on the southeast corner, it is really hard to see him, that's also like a sort of a goal. And so, that's my, that would be my only, you know, will present to support the stop sign. Like, I'm sort of neither here nor there on it, I guess, but, you know, as of a driver, I mean, that has happened to me a couple times where someone just snuck up, especially if people are getting up to, you know, 70, some people are getting up to 70 miles an hour on that road, and there's no stop sign, I mean, that's really fast, I mean, they could come out of nowhere, especially, especially with, like, the incline.
All right, so should we take a straw poll? All right, so, I, here are the three questions. One, the first is we just go back to the status of what we're for, the experiment. Okay, the second is we keep the four-way stop sign, the four-way stop, and, and add to that the radar feedback sign. Door number three will be go back to the two-way stop with the radar feedback sign. How's that? All right? Okay, so, so, by right, this is a straw poll, okay, and this is only suggestive to the staff. So, all those in favor of, all those inclined to go back to the status quo before this experiment, raise your hand. No votes for that? Okay. All those inclined to keep the four-way stop sign and add to that the radar feedback sign?
Can you hold for two?
Yes.
All right, great.
Yeah, okay, so, three there, okay. And the last one, the, the two stop signs and add the radar feedback sign.
Wait, the two?
Okay.
The two-way stop?
Two-way, two-way stop.
Remove the, remove the two, the Bradley Road.
Yes, the two ways, okay, let's try it, the two-way stop plus the, you know, feedback sign.
Or maybe express, go back to where it was reported, but add the radar, radar sign.
Yeah. All right, so, we have four for that, so, by a very slim margin, that seems to carry the most weight as far as pork installation.
Well, we will, our situation in terms of, you know, funding for it is that we'll sit down and put paper and pencil. The stop sign's not going to be ripped out anytime soon, if we, if we take it out, but we've got to contemplate, you know, how much of the fund is in, in the time given, and all this, so. But it's good that you guys had the conversation, and you kind of understand.
All right, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you, it was very interesting discussion, and thank you, and the department for, for studying this for a year.
Can I ask one question?
Of course you can.
Mr. Krabbe? The bushes at, people keep talking about.
Yeah.
It is, is, is it all possible just to talk that from order, and explain the situation, and strongly suggest that they relance the town? Is that anything that the village could, help me get...
I think, I think they can do more, I think if they're complaining, we have a, the homeowners have a right to maintain vegetation in the, in the right of way, and not allow it to become a visual barrier, or, you know, a hazard. So, you know, if there's bushes that are at the intersection, or, I don't know, if we have a...
Well, we have the same situation...
We'll, let's hear from the realtor.
We have the same situation on Fairchild and, Fairchild and Regent. We have the same situation with the southwest homeowner on Fairchild and Regent. We have this big line of bushes, so if you're going, now, going, he's not Fairchild, of course, Jay Monica, you can't see the North Palm, but not Regent, period.
I, I would have to do a little research, but I believe the village has regulation of what we call a vision corner, which is what we're talking about. You can't put signs in a vision corner. And as for plantings, again, I'd have to do a little research of whether it also addresses...
We, we have addressed that issue a couple times, excuse me, a couple places in the village. We generally try to, unless some things are at, you know, real hazard, we try not to bother people, you know, with the vegetation, because people take it, you know, personal, and they invest in it, just, and we're not able to do that. But we have gone and talked to people, say, could you cut this back? Sometimes it's received okay, sometimes it's not received okay.
Well, you, you raise a good point, because sometimes the operator is very happy to entertain these ideas, and it doesn't hurt to ask.
Ask, yeah. I don't even know who's house it is, but it's my home.
Yeah, okay, we can follow up with that. Good, good idea. All right, so, we will move to new business, five A ones to various boards, committees, and commissions. The board, everybody has in front of you the president's appointments for various boards, committees, and commissions. Some of these are members require board approval. I move approval of a slate of appointments for boards, committees, and commissions. Second, by Mr. Allman, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Appointments are approved. Pool survey, the board will discuss and may approve the proposal from Neighborhood Analytics, L C, or whatever, the five-way pool survey. Mr. Geraldo, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, yeah, thank you. We're moving expeditiously on this matter, and I think, one of the, that discussed in the past, we need one of our next major points of communication and information that we need to collect is, is feedback from the community at large. And since then, we've actually identified, we being mainly village staff, four different companies that we've got that have the experience and background, who conduct a neighborhood's survey based on pool preferences. It's really going to build off of the work that Hatters Associates already did with the renderings and estimates of the probable construction cost, and the details that we presented at our last meeting. We interviewed either in person or via phone before companies that submitted proposals for this project, and we identified Neighborhood Analytics as a leading company that we would like to go ahead with. This was a non-budgeted item, so would have to come out of some category in this, that the staff can find the appropriate area that would pay for this, this survey, but we would like to have this completed in this summer, or two, so, getting to the conclusion of this summer, this is pool season, and we would have some really good information as to what the community preferences are for it, or having a community for or not. With that, the proposals, anything else I want, maybe open a big question, it's a quick, one-minute background on what we've done.
How do you envision the question being formed for the survey?
I think it's going to be done primarily amongst myself, possibly one or, one person additionally from the pool committee staff, and then using, obviously, the knowledge that the company that would conduct the survey, certainly Neighborhood, except the other companies will all too have a good experience of this type of what we're looking for, and I could, or use their, their knowledge and expertise to draft the questions.
I should have introduced you to mention that you are chair of the pool, and have done an excellent job with this board, with this regard, and this concept.
Do you anticipate that the questionnaire, this is basically is a questionnaire that would be used, right? Will have some sort of basic background, providing context, you know, such as, well, a little bit of history of the pool, and I particularly think, when you ask people, you know, basically how supportive they are of the pool, they need to have a context of, you know, not only your capital costs, but the ongoing costs, and stuff like that, because, obviously, you ask somebody, you know, they like something, and you don't say how much it's going to cost, you might get two different answers. So, so I, I just want to, I guess, and my question is, do you anticipate that you will be accompanying some sort of, this questionnaire with some description of what's involved in terms of, of the expenses and stuff like that?
Yeah, correct. So, the question, you're right, we talked about that with staff in particular, myself, and there's, to complete this questionnaire, there's going to be some reading involved, and we'll try to keep it comprehensive, yet not overly onerous as a plan, so, that, one of the methods of thinking about doing it, is it's going to be distributed by DPW, and there'll be a website, and we'll pay people a little website to access the questionnaire. And we do have similar options for people that don't have access or prefer it in a printed form, and we can do that on request, if one of you is a member, but, yeah, there is quite a bit that's going to be kind of prefaced in the background for some of these questions.
Right, right. It's just throwing out some random...
Yeah, otherwise...
That is the process. Right. We have a factual basis for then getting to the questions.
Right, otherwise, the answers aren't very useful.
Right, yes, yeah.
So, and, this would, as you say, be a flyer, and the DPW would distribute to every household, and people could either participate online, or they can come to the village and get a questionnaire, that's what I, that's the way I understand this. Now, there's a sentence in here that doesn't really, I don't know what, what it means. It says, "To increase participation, Neighborhood Analytics recommends that the village draw attention to the impending survey through various structured means." And the only structured mean I know of is the Fox Point View. I mean, we used to have newsletters and newspapers and things like that, that would get information of it. What do you anticipate might be used to, you know, to say, draw attention to the impending survey?
Yeah, I think this matter for structured means is probably a lot of, like, video mail communication, we have communications for village items and issues, and have both kind of initial awareness that there is a survey forthcoming, and we have each household, and, towards the end of the conclusion of the deadline, to have another one in that regard. And depending if we wanted to or not, this would be required, if we wanted to do a multiple door drop with DPW, I mean, it would take a little more time in their regard, plus for drinking costs, or, you know, like, additional flyers, I mean, probably be like a reminder of, like, what we know it is, or some manner, whatever. But those would be, you're right, with the lack of direct mailing and print that we have now, structured means is, is going to be limited. Print-wise, it's going to be, it's going to, you know, sort of more based on electronic engaging. That's inaccurate, Scott, and this is...
Yeah, I think the only other thing that we talked about was, and I know the two of the two churches have agreed, but to have our churches announce them, you know, go to, go to places where you have lots of gatherings of people, so, you know, at the end of a service, say, hey, the village Fox Point is doing a pool survey, if you're interested, please do that. So, I know a couple of churches have, that I've talked to, one of whom was on your consent agenda, they said, yeah, we'd be absolutely willing to help out, and, you know, just give the word out as best we can. So, I mean, that's, you think about, you're going to have a couple hundred people sitting at a church for a couple services, and it'd be Sunday or whatever, that's a capital audience, a little bit of mission to tap those on.
Just a suggestion that just came to mind now, is that you might put a temporary sign outside the pool, say, I'm for the survey, you know, because people, you know, over a course of time, watch the villagers by there.
Are you planning on doing two drops with the DPW, or just one?
Right now, we'll get one.
Oh, okay.
But that would be, yeah, it would be a lesser option if we felt like we needed to do that.
I would say, we're not getting responses, the response would be about, we wouldn't, we couldn't do that, but we hope, we hope we could do it.
Yeah, we're trying to, yeah, it's, it's a time of print costs, but we're trying to do one, and then even some more trying.
Yeah, Mr. Allman? Yeah, I guess, I, I think this is a step we need to take to move us along, reaching a decision point on the pool, so, I'm supportive of it, and I think the, the proposal from Neighborhood Analytics, it'll see regarding the Fox Point, the pool survey.
Second.
Second, from Mr. Krabbe, further discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion areas, pool survey is approved. Item five C, potential Fox Point Village Board compensation. This is before us again. Mr. Krabbe, more?
I wanted to bring it up again, with the, with, under the circumstances that, well, both Trustee Fonstad and I had just gotten re-elected, and if there was any compensation to be voted upon, we would be the last ones to gain, assuming we would actually get re-elected here in three years from now. So, it's, it's a more, looks like more of a pure motive, if you will. My, my feeling on the compensation, first, it's not much, but what it does is it moves the needle a little bit, in that, I don't think anybody here resents going volunteer work, but I, but I think that, from a general perception, I think we've become a little bit more, or become more accountable and approachable by Fox Point residents, if we're getting paid a little something to do this. I recall when I was on the board, and I had an issue, how would, I mean, has them to call somebody up, either today or at night? I mean, as a volunteer guy, but if I know that the village is paying them something, I feel a little bit more bold to do that, and I, and I think it would make us a little bit more accountable. I don't think there's anybody here that really, you know, needs the money to live on, and certainly anybody can donate the money to the Fox Point Foundation, or, or whatever they want, or, or somebody that, that might want. But I think it also opens up to other residents in Fox Point, the ability to run for the board, the ability to serve on the board, and not take, when I have to do it, and doing so. So, I see just nothing but good reason. I understand the thinking up till now, that we didn't get paid because we're sort of above the fray of money, but, but I think the more powerful impression is that it does make us more accountable and approachable. That's why I thought I would bring it up again, I thought the timing was good for me, because if we do have to pass something, I'm not benefiting from it, unless I get re-elected in three years from now.
I'm going to ask for other members of the board to speak, but I might mention that I expect, surely after everybody's had a chance to make a motion to postpone this agenda item to the next meeting, because we do not have a full complement of order that is here tonight. All right, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Allman?
Yes, well, this is, at least the third time, maybe the fourth time, that we've faced this issue.
Third time.
Yeah, and as far as I can tell, nothing really has changed, so I was a little bit taken aback that it was, it's up again, because it hasn't been approved, fact, we voted on it last time before it was down, and I was one of the people who voted against it. And, in short, we, this really depends on the civic mindedness of many people who volunteer their time, not only on this board, but on all the many, many boards that were just approved with a lot of appointments, and I know the Tree Commission, and the Board Review, and the Fire Commission, and other things I want, they, they, they all take my time, and I'm happy to do it, but I'm very conscious that there are, every, all the time I spend is also being spent by other people who aren't being paid, and I, I just philosophically am opposed to getting paid for my time, when we ask so many people to give their time, and without compensation, and, I mean, they do it because of, of their sense of civic pride, civic duty. I'm the longest-serving trustee right now, but, you know, two of the people I, who are on the board that I, when I started, are on committees with me now, and, basically, this is over ten years later. So, we need, we have people who, who are very fortunate in this community, have many people who give their time freely, and make a great community, so, I'm glad it's going to be postponed. I guess as far as, as far as full disclosure, I got a call from Trustee Krabbe last night, that I left a voicemail, and I also got a call from Trustee Sumner this morning, he left a voicemail. I called Bill back, and when he indicated he was going to be, he wanted to talk about the compensation, I told him that... the compensation, I told him that I did not want to talk about the issue since it was on the agenda tonight, and I was concerned about any walking court kind of issues. Also told him I'd got a call from Liz, I assumed she would be talking about the same thing, so I called Liz back, and not the voicemail, but, so I have exchanged conversation with both Trustee Kravitz and Trustee Sumner, but we did not talk about anything of compensation.
Yes, Mr. Village?
I just want to, well, a couple of things. First of all, this matter requires a three-quarter vote of the board, which means it requires six votes in favor to pass. That means that any two members can control the outcome, which means that the concern raised about walking court is very heightened in this issue. You really should not talk to one another outside of a publicly known meeting, under our open meetings. Secondly, it's already been mentioned, but I just want to make sure it's very clear to everyone that if this were to be adopted, it would not take effect for anybody during their current term of office, it would only take effect after they were reelected. So, we'd have to walk through and make it very clear how that would be handled, understand that law can't take effect during their current term of office.
Would anyone else like to be heard of this type of summary?
Yeah, I mean, I've always been in favor of this. I don't see this as volunteering, I think it's different than being appointed to a board, because you don't have to run for that position, there's no contest, people don't have to knock doors, print literature, sign, actively campaign for those volunteer positions. So, I do think it's different, and I think this is the job, and I think most people that are elected to government positions are compensated for their time, and I think that most people that live in this village are, would be shocked to find out that we aren't compensated for this. You know, I feel like, you know, I'm a mom, you know, I've had to hire a babysitter before to watch my kids so that I can come to these meetings, and it would be nice to be compensated a few dollars to do that, instead of having to come out of my pocket, also, you know, to possibly put towards my campaign efforts. So, I just think that there are some monetary concerns that don't come along with some of the other actual volunteer positions on boards, you know, with our city government, our village government. And I also feel like, you know, by us not compensating, not being compensated, you know, it sort of indicates the value that we, as a board, and also our community, put like a tribute to this job. So, you know, what is the value of what we are doing for our village? And I think by not being compensated, it sort of indicates, indicates that it's in.
Anyone else?
Oh, Mr. Kravitz? I would just, I suppose, I respect Trustee Bonstet's position, but the proof is unputted. We looked at all the neighboring villages and cities, and we looked at how they, how they compensate or don't compensate their trustees in present, and I remember, I know might have one other village I didn't compensate, everybody else is getting paid to some degree.
Yes, I, you're correct, and if I can just make that and one other factual observation, maybe two other factual observations. The staff did do a study that it shared with us, and you're involved when we discussed this. In the five county area, at least, there are only three municipalities which do not compensate trustees or aldermen, whether it's board or city elected officials. Those are Fox Point, River Mills, and Elm Grove. Every single other municipality compensates their elected officials to some degree. Mr. Larson is correct, the state law requires a three-quarters vote to pass compensation for board members, this means six votes are required. And Mr. Larson is right, any two trustees therefore can control the outcome. This did come to a vote last year, and it actually gained five votes in favor and two against. So, it was one vote short, but it was not as though a majority of the board felt like this was a bad idea. In fact, the majority of the board felt like this was an appropriate idea. All right, I move to postpone this item to June 11, 2019, November 4.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, yes, we're in.
I don't see a point in postponing it.
So, the vote is, the vote is my vote. I'll take this up next. If you chair an agenda item, does any member wish to put an agenda item on an upcoming agenda report? Hereina, we will move then to announcements. Out for Mr. Bonstet?
I would just, we had a very good Arbor Day observation at Mapledale School, you all should have received the link to video that the students put together. What's not shown in the video is that there was a, one of the students read a multi-chapter essay on the life of Governor Nelson, and that the school board recited a book they had written about trees, that was, the school board was like twelve members, so that's a lot of kids too, but they, it was very well done, and look forward to going back there two years. We're now going to alternate the Arbor Day observations from Stormont to Mapledale on a year-to-year basis.
Ms. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Kravitz?
Mr. Manager, our village manager, I think, trusts us, who is Village Open House is happening again, and it coincides with the opening weekend of the pool, which is on August 4th, June, I think it's the second weekend of, second Saturday of June.
Mr. Kravitz?
Well, my only announcement is slowly, a little bit behind the scenes, I'm working with, with Seth Randmeyer, and putting a few more doggy stations around the village where it's appropriate. We have, I think, three or four installed now, and I think that's worked out well. Respect the fact that once one gets put in, there's, that's just the tip of the iceberg, there's a schedule now that has to be put forth, putting the big bags and stocking up the poo bags, but I think we'll see another couple of doggy stations around the Indian Creek area, and possibly the tennis court area, and wherever else we can put, we're certainly not overloaded with doggy overstations now. I think it's a great idea for the village, I think it's really friendly, and we walk our dogs, and when I see someone just put in, they pick up the poop, but they just let the bag on the sidewalk, so I'm thinking, who's picking that up? Who's picking that up? So, the more the merrier, so.
Mr. Orman?
No, I'm, I'm... Mr. Manager? You mean more bags, not more poop bags? Well, we should, well, it's a crowd tonight, too, I'm driving, so. I have a question, it's the drugs, antibiotics, it's kicking in. I have a question for asking you today, if I could give a brief, really brief update on the Chiswick project, so I'm going to do that, I asked Emily to write me a quick update, and I'll just share what I have, and if there's any other information you want, anytime, please contact us, we'll be glad to get it. I think it's, you know, the clubhouse opened in December, and if you ever want to, you know, go over there and visit, take a tour, you're welcome to do so, just do not do so with a quarrel, please, do not do that. But it's very, very nice, staff twenty-four seven, the DC maintenance personnel. First residential buildings A and D have been turned over to Mandel, green fires built them, they have delivery day, they tend to turn them over to Mandel. Building A has seven units already occupied, building D has three units occupied. As of today, they have thirty-five units already reserved with deposits, which is pretty good, since two of the buildings have done that. The VC building is supposed to be delivered, there's two of them, V and C. Delivered by the end of June, landscaping is underway, and will wrap up by late June and early July, while they're permitting it. And so, that's the brief update on the project, but, you know, Mike and I have taken a tour, and it's, it's been very well received in the community, and it's very well done, so. And kind of along with that, Zura has submitted their stuff, their building permit, once we get the final calculations done, the plan review fee will be, will be written soon, and I know it's underway, so that's kind of, you know, done with the school site. Those are supermarkets, I can't drown. Yeah. The next thing I have, this is just to fill in, or to give you guys final copies of what you got last night, remember the pool aquatic facilities that I was last month, right? Came in, and I trust concerns about the labor cost differential, they had included, they have included, and you'll remember, it's primarily on pages twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, that they have added the labor costs, and so the numbers, I'll just have to repeat passes around. But you may want to throw this into your file, if you have a pool file at home, just throw that in there, and you should restore the element, because the cash flows are inactive. If any of you audience wants some, they're right there, but the labor cost obviously gave a little bit of a different picture of what the cash flows are. County Met, I just, we had some citizens last month speak, and I know, trying to, everyone can give a response to the citizen comment, and we talked about the gentleman, I think it was Mr. Manor K. I'm sorry, Fulton, I was close, Mr. Fulton was here, speaking about County Met, and we talked about it at staff, and I think what we're going to do, if you remember, he's talking about stop signs on County Met right away, this is one that we're probably going to do the same thing that we're doing with other streets now, is that as soon as we get it done, and we get to springtime, we're going to maybe even put the speed trailer out there, get some baseline data, and then go back and see what we're doing. As you said, it's kind of an alternative, and now we're sensitive, the speed limit on it, we do, we do want to make sure that the extra width on the side that we give to the pedestrian, doesn't give the feeling that the age of percentile number goes up or down based upon with the roads, that does, that can't happen. And so, but just, as you can imagine, there's no stop sign going up to County Met this summer, but just to be clear, it's probably not going up this winter, we're going to start developing some data and make a rational decision on that, so that's kind of what we did. The last thing I have for you is, and Brad Vio is here from Bear, but two things, that there's a portion, and I haven't really decided how to do this, but in our one-point-eight billion dollar authorization to do borrowing this year, there's about seventy-nine thousand of it that was for the library for this year. It's pretty apparent that we're not going to spend seventy-nine thousand dollars this year on the library, and so, so that's one thing. At the same time, if you notice, there's a piece of equipment down in Santa Monica, down by Williams Rocket, it's like the size of our building, we've had a sinkhole there for, if you remember, three years ago, we had a sinkhole, two years ago, we had a little bit of a sinkhole, last year it kind of stopped sinking, and this year it's just been, it's been going to town. And what we have discovered is that there's a sixty-foot pipe in there, that's actually NMSD's pipe, won't get into technical details, got an outside riser pipe on it, but as Mike, or not Mike, Scott Randmeyer told me, it's from like late nineteen twenties or the thirties, the pipe is that steep and old, and it's clay tiled, and what's happening is that it's collapsing, and we tie into the drop side rock pipe, because they don't allow us to tie into the actual Mandel, so, and we have to fix it, we don't really have a choice. Once we open it up, we go down as far as we have to go down, we could be going down sixty feet, that is a long way, and that's why you see the size of equipment you have up there, because you can't go down sixty feet if you have just like a little back road. So, I did have a discussion with Bear, and again, once we open up the ground, we'll have a little bit better idea, we have televised it, but once we open the ground, we'll see how far down we have to go, but it's possible that sinkhole fix could be about the same price as the library in the seventies. So, if that happens, I may leave the borrowing on exactly as you approved tonight, and just use, it's a public, obviously a public purpose, it's a public purpose, and just use that for the sewer, as opposed to the library, which we obviously won't use. Now, one of the things I am going to do is I'm going to back a little cash balance of the sewer fund, and maybe lend it, maybe use cash. We're not at the point tonight where we have to make that decision, and I'll sort of keep you apprised of it as we go along, but I just want, I should tell you about this stuff up ahead, so you can be aware of it when it comes time to make a decision, but you will see Santa Monica, this is my last thing, you will see Santa Monica kind of be a mess this week, they are going to run the pipe under the Santa Monica, do the cut in Santa Monica, up at County Met, you see what the blue water pipe's stacked up, that's because they're going in the ground. We had planned for that to happen, we had not planned for Santa Monica to start sinking down here at the same time we were doing this up here. So, you know, it is what it is, we'll do the best we can, but Santa Monica is kind of going to be a little bit of a mess this week, so if you get calls from people, that's what.
Are they able to discuss?
No, we're not able to. No, we're, we're just, yes, we're just... Yeah, you asked for another. And Marty Oregro at the Fox Point Open House, which is the second Saturday, we just had the tent, Mike?
Eight.
Eight, okay, it's the eight. So, please come, President Fraser promised the weather, is all I got.
I would like to congratulate Justin Padway onto supporting him as our new village attorney. Welcome, Mr. Padway.
Prosecutor.
See her. Welcome prosecutor Padway. Mr. Padway is the, Justin is the son of Will Padway, the former village judge, he grew up in the village of Fox Point, and we're very happy to have him now as part of the Fox Point, what, prosecutorial family? That doesn't sound right. We're very, we're very happy to have you as our village prosecutor.
Thank you very much, I just want to say a thank you to everyone of you, I'm extremely honored, I grew up in this village, so it means a lot to me to be able to represent the village, and I see how much everybody here cares about the village, and I'm honored to be a part of it, and you all have my worth, and I will do everything in my power to do a great job and make the village proud, so thank you all very much, it means a lot.
Thank you.
No screening, right? No screening.
I would also like to announce that on April, May, and twenty nineteen, I traveled up to Hart Falls, to meet with, to visit Mr. Ken Wondaker. I reported last month that Mr. Wondaker, age ninety-one, has decided to leave his estate to the village of Fox Point. I presented Mr. Wondaker with our proclamation that we approved at the last month's meeting, he immediately broke into tears of gratitude and accepted it. The property that the village hopes to obtain upon his death includes his third acre hobby farm, and there's various other implements and pieces of equipment there too, so it was fun to meet him, and very interesting to see his property. He told me a little about his life, right in there, it's a Fox Point view, so you'll just have to wait for that, but a little bit of a, a little bit of a highlight, the, as I mentioned at the last meeting, he has arranged, Mr. Wondaker arranged in two thousand and two to be buried in the Old Dutch Cemetery by a resolution of the village board, and he has this, he qualifies for this honor, because he can trace his direct lineage to the first settlers of Fox Point, including a number of individuals buried in the cemetery. The last person buried in the cemetery was his grandmother, and that occurred in nineteen fifty-eight.
Yeah, so it's a cemetery by Dr. Park?
Yes, that's the cemetery, that's the historic cemetery immediately to the south of Dr. Park, and that was the site of the first settlers of this area, from Holland, that's why it's called the Old Dutch Cemetery, and they built a wooden schoolhouse, which doubled as a church in eighteen fifty-two. as a church in eighteen fifty-two, and, and turned a continuing piece property into a cemetery which still exists and is maintained by the village. So I suspect the next funeral in that cemetery will be Mr. Landecker's.
You know what? You're dead.
All right, we now move to agenda item A, closed session. It is anticipated that the board will convene in a closed session for the following reasons. Pursuant to State Statute, section nineteen forty-five, one chief, to confer with counsel who was regularly advised into a strategy to be adopted by the body of respect segregation in which it is, is it is or is likely to become involved, involving properties located at four levels east Radnor Road and one through the ninth east, uh, twelve. Participating in this portion of the closed session will be the village board, village manager, village attorney, village assistant manager, public works director, and the village clerk, treasurer. I move to convene into closed session. Second. Second by Mr. Fonstad, we will have a roll call, vote this for treasurer.
Trustee Fonstad?
Aye.
Trustee Sumner?
Aye.
Trustee Torado?
Aye.
Trustee Kravitz?
Aye.
Trustee Omen?
Aye.
President Fraser?
Aye.
Very well, we will move into closed.